We've been able to maintain consistent performance, educational performance for our kids, as we've even backed the school year up for two consecutive years to start after Labor Day, which decreases the amount of time our students are in classes and in coursework prior to state testing. And so I think it's a point of note, it's a celebration in some sense, that we are able to maintain high levels of academic achievement, even though we've made some adjustments to school time, what part of the year it starts. And so again, it's something I think is something to keep a note for future reference. As we look to make adjustments backwards, we readjust our school calendar. That will give our kids a competitive advantage, they will have more time in class prior to state testing. We know we have work to do in this area, and I'll talk a little bit about in a second, on what that looks like, but I do want to look at the achievement trend over time. If you do look at our, and I'm putting this up there for a reason, if you look at sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen school year, you will see very consistent achievement for our students. And again, the last three years are important because that's referring to the same state assessment. So the Ohio State tests were created and the course exams were created and implemented for three consecutive years. Our students are scoring consistent across those three years. The black represents students that are scoring in the advanced category. Green is accelerated, orange is proficient, purple and blue are basic. And the red is limited. So that tells you, from a trend standpoint, we see very consistent performance from our students across the board. We introduced this to our district leadership team the other day, this trend, which includes our principals and assistant principals and some central office leadership. And we are beginning to look and focus on ways that we can address this trend to continue to grow all students. So again, consistent achievement, which we have aspirations to continue to grow that. Another area of celebration would be our progress. Progress measures growth of all students from one year to the next. Growth is significant, is a significant category for all districts, but especially our district. And the trend in our district has been for the last number of years, that we've scored very high in growth. What that's measuring is how kids are scoring from one year to the next against the normal curve equivalency. So this is, growth is a significant word. That's what we're focusing on from a teaching and learning department, as well as our staff. We want to see all kids grow. It matches the strategic vision that we talked about at the beginning. We want to see continued improvement in learning and success for all students. But this is, if you are a B, it is considered you are making more than one year's expected growth with students across the board. And so that's a tremendous accomplishment. Looking at our continuous improvement, so a little highlight in state test data. What's more important is what we're going to do to counteract, what we're going to do to implement and make improvements in there. So within our continuous improvement plans as a district, each is a leadership team, but within every building, we have a goal of increased achievement and accelerate growth for all students in all performance levels, as evidenced by local, state, and national assessments in 2018, 19. So our goal already implemented within our continuous improvement plans in the building, at the building level, is to focus on growing all students in all subgroups in all areas. How we do that, I've included a few examples of how we plan to attack and continue to grow our kids is, first of all, our MTSS and RTI process, including our Tier Two academic interventions. This is specifically for subgroups and students who are not meeting expectation. We have significant work that we're doing within our grade levels and our teams to address how we're going to advance achievement for kids who are not meeting the expectation to begin with. And then also how we're going to continue to stretch our students who are meeting expectations or have mastered material. We've implemented positive behavioral intervention support throughout our district. That has continued to be a district focus. We'll continue this year looking at ways to continue to motivate and encourage and support all students and recognize the cultural differences and in relationships with kids during those times. Each building is also working on professional learning communities, which I'll talk about in a second. We, as a teaching and learning team, have begun a lot of significant work around grade level collaboration, where we are putting all of our grade level teachers across the entire district, from our six elementaries and even the middle school and high schools. We are putting those teachers in the same room to have significant discussions about student learning. How are we supporting them? What are we doing? How are we meeting their needs? How are we extending? How are we enriching? We're personalized professional learning for our teachers. So personalized professional learning is something that we focused on as a district prior to my arrival as well, where we want to allow teachers the opportunity to grow individually and grow and develop for ways that works for them as well as what they need. And then as a team, we've begun the work of instructional walkthroughs. We do those on Mondays. We have our teaching and learning team meetings within the buildings. And then as a team, we go and we are trying to grow and develop our instructional leadership by doing instructional walkthroughs in classrooms. So a little bit of the continuous improvement process. Susan, if you could back to please, to the professional learning communities, thank you. This is where I just want to take a second to, again, recognize our board for significant work on helping to establish and create collaborative time in each one of our buildings to focus on professional learning communities. With late start time has enabled us to allow teachers the opportunity to collaborate. Each building has time this year to do that. Focusing on our four main questions, what do we want students to learn? How will we know when they've learned? How will we support students when they don't learn? How will we support students who have already learned it? These questions are the fabric of our professional learning communities at each building and in our classrooms. We are partnering with Eric Twaddell from Adley Stevenson High School to work with all of our administrators and leadership team on not only culture, but implementation of professional learning communities. But we're really focusing through this time on how do we intensify instruction for students? Intensify be the key word for students that need it, based on they've already mastered it, or students that need it because they need a little additional support. Through this, we are going to work on creating personalized learning experiences. This work has begun through flexible learning spaces in the classroom and giving our students the opportunity to learn in ways that they are comfortable with and effective use. Seen some amazing things in our classrooms as our teachers, as I've been doing walkthroughs and been in buildings. See some really innovative and amazing ways that our teachers are using the furniture that have been provided, that create just an incredible experience for our students. But we will take this, personalized learning is a overarching, significant work over the next, I consider it an eight to 10-year initiative as we really look to personalize the learning experience for each and every child, where they take ownership, they have targeted instruction, and we're using data to make those decisions. The last piece that I want to talk about this evening is instructional leadership. And I'm going to use the marching band as a great example of this, but there's three words at the top of this slide that talk about vision, alignment, and execution. When you have a clear vision, when you align your resources and you execute what you've said you're going to do, you can see significant growth. Our marching band at Forest Hills is a great example of having a vision, aligning resources, and executing something that's amazing for our students. Gap closing, the growth in gap closing over three years. Clear vision, alignment of resources, execution to a high level. That's what we are focusing on, not only as a teaching and learning team, but we're beginning that work throughout the entire district. Our instructional leadership is a primary focus from our teaching and learning team. We started that work with our district leadership team this past week. We are aligning support with learning design specialists that are in seven of our nine buildings, on how they're supporting instruction in the classroom. We're creating collaborative environments that are impact our building leadership teams. Again, our district, and I want to, it's really a testament to the leadership throughout the entire district of blending incredibly high academic expectations with significant innovation and learning experience for our students. So really excited to be a part of that process moving forward, looking forward to the challenges of continuing to grow all of our students. And I think we have tremendous resources that we're looking to align and execute to a high level. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take those this evening.
That was great. Really, that was a lot of information, and thank you very much. I remember when we had our app in gap closing. And I remember the discussion we had, you know, our top performing kids were doing really well. They were all getting into the schools of their choice. And we were losing the kids at the bottom. And I remember we talked a lot and put a lot of emphasis in there. And so I agree with you, you know, we can put some resources where we want them to be and show significant improvement. You know, improving at K through three readers. I think we've put some resources there with all-day kindergarten, and I expect to see that go up. Tell me a little bit about the preparedness for success and achievement. What's making those numbers move? And what would we do to get those pointed in the right direction too?
So when you look at the prepared for success, that category is built on the number of students that earn remediation free, remediation free score on all parts of the ACT or SAT. So the remediation free, based on their hitting certain marks that they will not need that. So we are, this past year we've had, in, let's see, 2016, 17, we had 672 of our students that met a remediation, which is 56.5% of the students that actually took the ACT. So we have, we have opportunity to continue to grow our students in how they're achieving within the ACT. That work, again, that percentage, 56.5%, is the exact same over a two-year timeframe. So we saw, within 17, 18, and 2016, 17, we saw that same work. I know that is an emphasis within both of our high schools. Had some conversation with some of our administrators with that. The other piece of that, there are bonus points based on AP scores. So students that score a three or higher on the AP, on an AP test, there's additional point values that kids can score from that. So continuing to look at the AP offerings that we do have, and then encouraging our kids to actually take the tests as well are important. But those are, that's kind of a little bit how it's factored. There are, there are other areas like honors diplomas that I think we can look at, but I know that our high schools are very interested in this type of work on how our students are scoring. And being the second year in a row where all of our students have taken the ACT, they're consistently analyzing that data as well.
We also want to grow the number of students we have taking AP courses. And that's something that we've had as an emphasis, because the more students are subjected to curriculum that's on the ACT through those AP courses, and the more prepared they are, and the better they will most likely do on those assessments. And so that's something that the district has also been consistent in. We received accolades from the college board for the number of students taking the test increasing, as well as the scores of those students taking the test. So again, there's that vision and alignment. But we had a significant addressing of that particular issue at Anderson High School during Mr. Broadwater's time as the principal there. Can you try to grow the number of students who are on that type of curriculum? If I have an expectation that our students can't do anything more than that, and they are capable in those courses. And this is a reflection sometimes of just the number of students who are taking an assessment, not necessarily how well they do on it.
Questions from anyone else?
I don't want to make a comment. Even though I'm new to the board, I'm not new to these numbers. Because I watched these very carefully in the years before, and I was actually very critical. I remember when that F came to, and I remember freaking out. And it is incredibly commendable the way that the board supported activities to make this improve, and that the staff and the schools improved it. I mean, that's a huge deal. Because those students are kind of hard to reach. And as I was, as I was watching this presentation and the slide about personalized learning, and PBIS is on there. So I've watched Air Elementary the last few years really kind of own that. And the way that that really pulls in those students that don't naturally want to learn, or may not do it as easily as others, I think that's really making a huge difference. Because you go in that school and you see full engagement. So I just want to take a minute because it's a big deal, and I just thank you all for taking it seriously, because this is what we're here for.
I'd also like to commend everybody involved for the progress that's been made. But when I look at the list of schools that have received an A, I'm aware, I think every one of them spends way more, significantly more than we spend on a cost-per-student basis. So that's a challenge. But I still want to ask the question, first I was going to ask if it's possible, but I realized that's the wrong question. The question I want to ask is, what will it take to move Forest Hills back up to the top ranking? And I realize that that's probably not a 30-second answer. And there's a lot to that. And I also recognize that the state has moved the goalposts almost every year. So that's a moving target. So I recognize there's all kinds of challenges here, not just students. But I still would like to ask the question, what will it take to get us back up to the top rating?
I'll let Greg answer that. But one of the things I'd like to comment on regarding schools that are receiving an A, the complexity of student population that exists in those schools. And when I say complexity, I mean diversity in student population across those schools. Our subgroups that we have are dramatically larger, and we have a greater audience to serve in many, many different ways. And many of the schools that you will see that have an A have a lesser amount of diversity within their schools. And I'm speaking of diversity in a very positive way now. I'm saying that I am proud of the fact that among those schools who offer programs to the extensive amount of students that we do, we are among the top performers, not only in the state, but in the nation regarding student performance. And our achievement gap and our year's growth across the board in all subgroups is a testament to how many things in this school district that we provide for many different students within our schools. Having been superintendent in Granville, Ohio, where the population is basically one particular population, and you're testing one subgroup against the field, we receive As every year, and I was very proud of that. And I'm very proud that they still maintain those scores, and I'm hopeful that they always do. When I come to a school that offers this type of comprehensive programming for this many different populations, I am significantly more proud because the accomplishments that we have and the programs and the processes that we have in place are meeting the needs across the board of all students. That is something that we need to take away from this presentation. As are good, that's what we want, that is our vision, that is our goal, that is what we will consistently strive for. But when we see the grades that we're seeing across the board, as Mrs. Barber stated, and other board members have, we're seeing a solid school district operating on many solid levels for the students that it serves. And I'm extremely proud of our students, our parents, and our staff. We will not stop going for those As. We should not underestimate the power of this school district and the good things that are happening in classrooms and the leadership that's involved, not only from the board level, but from the parent and community level, through their expectations and their generosity to support us. So I may be a little emotional right now, but I'm proud of this. And I'm not suggesting that anyone isn't. But I'm very proud of what's happened in our school district. And we are committed to going back now in those areas where we see some scores that we're not excited about, and working that into our PLC discussions, and working that into the data collection that we have, and having continuous conversations with our curriculum instruction program and our teacher leaders to talk about instruction in classrooms and what specific things we can do in classrooms to meet the individual needs of students, which obviously reflects in all students rising to a different level. And that's what we're going to continue to do in our school district. That is our vision, and I believe that's our bread and butter. And that's why we are, always have been, and will continue to be, a school to have in the state of Ohio.
Let me just add that, as I looked at your continuous improvement plan, when you get deeper into that, it's going to go up.
No question.
Without a doubt.
No question. And I'll point out that, you know, currently, based on this report card, there are 28 As for overall performance in the state of Ohio out of 609 districts. So there's no reason, with the resources and the efforts, and if we align to the, we align all of our efforts and we go through our continuous improvement work and the strategic plans that we have in place, there's no reason that we couldn't be there. For me, in our work, it focuses on growth. The most valuable thing that we can stand here and say is that we grew all kids at all levels from where they were. So the most important thing in our work is growing kids. And so through personalized approaches, through innovative practices, through standards-aligned instruction, how we're growing kids is the most important piece. And my, under, my expectation is, if we work to grow kids, then those final grades look different. And if it's still a moving target, we can sit up here and feel really good about where we are if we continue to make significant growth with kids at all levels.
Item 10.1, board discussion. Any items for board discussion? Item 10.2, change of location. Mr. Prebels, are you going to do this, or he won't meet you?
I don't know that we need an official vote, do we? The point is, now that the facility at Nagel, which is centrally located in the school district, is available again, it also provides opportunities for us to have students perform because it has locations where everybody in the room can actually see and it would not displace the board and the sound system. We also have a better viewing monitor at the other location for people who are coming to the meeting. And so we are thankful that we were able to use Mercer. It's a great room, and we thank Mrs. Davidson for allowing us to come here. And we'd like to go back to Nagel for all the reasons that I stated, if it's okay with members of the board.
All good. See you at Nagel next month. Are we going to be on the consent agenda starting at 11.1?
Correct.
Yes. 11.1, Mr. Broadwater?
Mike's going to come up and talk about TIF resolution. A tax increment financing is a TIF, and it's a subsidy for redevelopment and infrastructure and other community improvement projects. So we have a resolution to present to the board. But more importantly, we're very excited about what Mr. Broadwater is going to ask members of the board to approve. And it is a collaboration between our township trustees, our Anderson Township, and the Park District, along with the school district in the state, in Forest Hills. There is a development, a senior development in our community known as Stone Crest, and it is a TIF piece of property. And because of that, there will be money, new money's generated because of development in our school district in Anderson Township that allows new revenue to come into the school district. And it is anticipated that that revenue over a 30-year period of time would generate approximately $4 million for the school district. And so through discussions with the township and the Park District, the Board of Education, our Board of Education and some negotiations that have happened there, we have come up with a collaborative agreement with the trustees who are negotiating terms with Beach Acres to purchase a piece of property that would update the rec plex in Anderson Township. And if this is acquired, the township will help to improve that facility. And they will use dollars from the school district and the township from these new revenue sources. And tonight, what we will be doing is asking the board to approve a resolution that would contribute one of the $4 million available to the board over approximately 30 years of revenue to be transferred to the township and the Park District for the purposes of updating the rec plex. And for those of you who are looking in and thinking, why would the school district be involved? We believe that the rec plex is a great place for our students who participate in summer programming, recreational, as well as social and emotional. We also believe that it's good for our families to have a rec plex that is updated and adds value to the community. And it will also help with the senior citizen group at the Stone Crest Development, which would just be a walk across basically a parking lot. So for the school district, it's an opportunity for us to collaborate with the township in a way that has not been done, I think, in the recent past. And one that adds value to the schools, to the youth programs, to families throughout the school district, as well as our senior citizen population. And so it gives us a great opportunity to connect with various groups by collaborating on a different level with the use of taxpayer dollars. And this community partnership is a priority of the board to continue to seek ways to work with township to lessen the possibilities of duplicated portions of our programming. And we will continue with some discussions in the near future about other opportunities that come available. So Mr. Broadwater's going to go through the specifics of that. But it's great for our students, we think it's great for the Park District, we think it's great for Anderson Township. We thank Anderson Township for the work that they do in development, which brings opportunities like this to all of us. And we're pretty excited about bringing this to the Board of Education this evening as a resolution.
Thank you. And 11.1 is the TIF resolution. And I've kind of piggybacked on Mr. Prebels as the individual who worked with the community teams and all the different things our kids do in this community. Anderson Township is a great community because our kids are so involved. But myself and Mr. Record, as we sit and we work with these community teams, like Jessica Paul we worked with from the township, there are times where we have to turn teams away because our facilities are just so full. And this, I think, is a great opportunity to not only renovate, but make more opportunities for our kids. So I say thank you to the board, to the township, and also to the Park District. This is a good thing for kids. So with that, I would say the superintendent recommends the board approve the tax increment financing, the TIF resolution pursuant to Section 5709.73 of the Ohio Revised Code with Anderson Township, and authorize the execution of the revenue sharing agreement with the township. For 11.2-
Before we move on, you know, I don't want to belabor everything Mr. Prebels just said, but one of our township trustees, Dee Stone, is here. One of our Park Board members, Tom Turchiano, is here. We worked really hard on this, and more than just the hard work, I think all truly appreciated the collaborative efforts to do the right thing for the community and working together to do that. So you guys are here, so thank you, Tom, thank you, Dee. Mr. Broadwater?
Thank you. 11.2, school beverage agreement with the bottling group LLC. It's Pepsi Beverages Company. I will tell you that this proposal is weighted extremely heavily on the pricing of the product, as I've worked with our athletic boosters. And this is to get the best pricing for our boosters so they can have the largest profit. If you're aware, in our schools, there's very little vending. It's basically money that is raised through our athletic booster programs with this proposal. So the superintendent recommends the board approve the school beverage agreement between the bottling group LLC and its affiliates and/or respective subsidiaries collectively comprising Pepsi Beverages Company for the period of July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2021, as shown in the attachment. For 11.3, this is change order for Summit Elementary partial roof replacement. If you recall, this was part of a permanent improvement project over the summer. This is not dealing with the bond project, but rather just a permanent improvement project. It was to remove additional tapered roof insulation and to furnish and install new tapered roof insulation. The value is at $3,633. The superintendent recommends the board approve the change order submitted by True Craft Roofing LLC in the amount of $3,633. Roofing LLC in the amount of $3,633. The next is 11.4, change order for the pre-purchase of district-wide lighting at Turpin High School. This is, we have, the math rooms are being completed at the top level of Turpin High School. The original phasing was to take the lighting from the temporary classrooms in the auxiliary gym, place them in the math rooms. The timing is such that if we do that, it's going to delay the completion of the math rooms. So, we are going to purchase the lighting for the math rooms. The good news is the lighting in the auxiliary gym will be used as attic stock as that is the exact same lighting throughout the district. So, that is lighting that we would need in the future anyhow. So, the superintendent recommends the board approve the change order submitted by Graybor Electric in the amount of $3,337.32. And that completes our change orders, a little bit better than last month. We really hit it pretty hard last month as we went through the summer. For the facilities update, what I thought I would do is just make it fairly short, but I think everybody got the positive feel. The biggest hurdle that we had or that I felt was getting our kids into school at Turpin and Anderson on time, and we did that. We accomplished that. A lot of positive feelings as you walk through the open houses, the classrooms, the lighting, the new furniture, the technology. It went extremely well getting our students back into classrooms. I think our staffs are very relieved and they're ready to get down to the business of just teaching and not worrying about everything else. The one issue that I've put up here is the HVAC issues at Anderson and Turpin. The schools have new HVAC, heating and cooling at both. The beginning of the school, we had very hot temperatures and therefore, the cooling systems were working overtime. The problem is as you pump in the cold air and it hits the hot air, you're going to have condensation. And with that condensation, you have humidity. And with the humidity while it's happening was some of our finishes were becoming a little bit, there was some swelling and some different things like that. We had a classroom at Turpin High School that was a science class room that we believe is humidity is the issue that we have with the science cabinets, if you recall that. Originally, we thought that maybe there were leaks in the windows, there's a brick behind the wall. That is not the case. It's humidity. So, what I have up here, we have met with our architect, SSOE. We've met with folks engineering Johnson Controls who is controlling the systems, Arty Gear which is doing the mechanicals at Turpin. We've met with Triton going the mechanicals at Anderson. These are the different staffs that we're going through to address the humidity. What I can tell you is we are measuring the humidity all the time. It is now at an acceptable level and now we're going to kind of go back and mitigate what we need to do to make things right in that at no cost to the district. So, we're in a good place with it. I will tell you that Anderson, the way it is cooled, the majority of classrooms that were called unit vents, unit vents are separate pieces of equipment in each classroom. That has been a challenge trying to maintain all of those and get the system balanced. The reason that it's been difficult at Anderson as well as Turpin is the building is not closed up, it will not be closed up until everything is finished. Therefore, you've got some areas that are not air-conditioned, some that are. So, to balance the entire system is tricky. You don't really do it until everything is finished. So, the good news is at Turpin, looking ahead, it's a six-week ahead, looking ahead today, it looks like the classrooms are going to be done at the end of October and come about the middle of November, we'll have the auxiliary gym done. So, by Thanksgiving, I think Turpin will be working on its functions. At Anderson, we have, they have begun, the old restroom room, it's going to become the bathroom, if you've been there, they've already done some devil there. They're breaking up the walls so that it's better acoustically. So, the Anderson project will be complete August 15th next summer. So, we're getting there. The last thing I would say is transportation. There is a hearing tomorrow that we anticipate good news and we're going to move forward with that. I would like to say thank you to all of our bus drivers. We ask so much of them because we have temporary housing for our buses and our bus drivers, they have loved and been for our kids. And I would like to say publicly, say thank you to them. They have done tremendous job for our kids. So, with that, the only update I thought I would give you in terms of pictures, well, we've had this for the budget. The top is what we have for September. If you notice, we are down to the difference at Anderson High School is $4.4 million. That's what we have left with the project. Again, that is guaranteed through Traveler's Insurance in order to complete the project. The other thing of note, I will say, is at Turpin High School, we have about $900,000 left in the bond monies to complete that project, which good news means, that means our project is towards completion. So, that is what you have for the September budget as we go through with the financial status. Okay, the last thing I have, instead of listening to me talk through pictures, I thought what we would do is throw up a little clip. If the board did not see it, I don't know, but it's always nice to hear from kids how they feel about air conditioning. So, we will put that up. Yes?
Mr. Broadwater, we changed up the agenda on you and we moved the resolution for the school bus purchases to 11.5. I did not hear that.
Yes, I will, let's finish this.
Okay.
The clearance event at Performance Kings Haddock and clearance savings and zeroed-out leases that include all taxes and fees.
Well, let's mute that for a second.
Can you increase the sound?
Well, it would be difficult, right, to focus all day at school on a day like today. So hot, humid with no air conditioning. And it's that very thing that prompted Finney Town Schools, my alma mater, to cancel class for today.
That's right. In the past, Anderson High School had to do the same thing, but not anymore. Since that on your side, Paolo Sorro shows us students and staff experienced a much cooler first day of school this year.
It was definitely really hot. I was just worried about whether or not you could see me sweating.
No matter who you ask.
It's really hot and muggy and, yeah, I would sweat all the time.
Boy or girl.
Especially when we had to like heat things up and like be mixing chemicals and stuff. Like sometimes we would have to move it to a different day just because those chemicals couldn't be exposed to like that kind of heat.
The heats throughout Anderson High School made it hard to focus in each class.
We'd stay in the hallway and we'd pass out water or popsicles to the kids in the afternoon. Because of the afternoon, it would really heat up. And by the afternoon, you would see staff and students not as fresh as they possibly could be to learn and to teach.
But this first day of class, although it was 90s outside, it was a cooler start to the year indoors.
I'm excited about air conditioning.
Where before, the high school had to cut its school day short during hotter days. Now, these vents make it easier for students to focus.
This is amazing.
That is a thing of the past. We've got it.
During the winter, freezing.
Like I would come to school with like three jackets on and like gloves and trying to type on my computer.
That won't be the case anymore as now there's central heating in the building. While there were renovations indoors, there also were plenty outdoors. The school moved its transportation, like its buses elsewhere, adding 186 spots for students and faculty to park right over here.
In 2014, our community passed a $103 million bond issue. And so, we've worked on all nine of our buildings as well as moving transportation.
Making the first day of school a little bit cooler. Paolo Sorro, nine on your side.
I think it's always nice to hear from kids. She smiles every year. It would be hilarious to her. Going back to 11.5, this is about school bus operation, purchase of school buses. If the board calls, it's a federal grant that's going to pay 50% purchase of these buses. And the superintendent, our superintendent, approved a resolution to override the purchase of school buses as shown in the attachment.
So, this wasn't on the agenda that we got Friday, right?
Correct.
We're still compiling bids to make the recommendation, if I'm not mistaken. This is what we open the bids on.
I thought we already approved the purchase of these buses.
This, this is a different group. This was the one where it was being held up by the Steel and Iron Waiver by the Department of Transportation. And it came through after the purchase of the 13 buses that we needed for this school year. So, we won't receive these buses until probably the end of the calendar year. And these are the ones where we're specifically identifying diesel buses, 11 of them, that have to be decommissioned and are being replaced by propane buses.
So, how many buses this time?
It's 11.
11 in addition to what was last time?
Which would be a total of 30 in the past year. And this one, we receive up to $492,000 from the federal government for the decommission of the diesel buses.
And these are in the budget?
What's the resolution say?
The resolution? As recommending the purchase of the 11 buses.
Correct.
And we got bids in when?
Last week, Wednesday.
Bids came in, that is, the issue with bids came in last week, the verdicts from legal came in one Friday.
Does anybody else have any questions about this?
Well, I'm glad you asked because I was going, I didn't know if I was just confused between the two too, so, you know, I always ask about this stuff.
Well, and I apologize. I didn't, until just now, I didn't know this was on the, on the agenda. It wasn't on there Friday. We didn't have a chance to ask any questions about it. Well, but I looked over the weekend. I didn't look today.
Yeah, I did too. Sunday.
Are there any variables? I mean, you've got bids. I'm assuming this is the low, low price bidder. We've got the federal grant. If we don't buy these, we don't get the federal grant, I assume.
Correct. I, I, when we had done it prior, the grant we had presented to the board that we had...
I remember the grant, I remember the discussion of the buses. I know we didn't have the money. I remember the discussion about the diesel. I'm...
So, the original resolution came to the board in March of 2017? And it has literally taken this long for the monies to be released by the federal government in order for us to be able to follow their procedures, which are very strict.
But when we, we approved it before, did we approve this or was it just all part of the prior plan?
It was just the grant itself, the engagement of our district with the Department of Taxation for the grant. This is part of the process of that grant, which is the formal bidding process for the buses. Which we couldn't go unified purchasing, we had to go through this process, I understand.
It's all part of the grant process?
Correct.
All right.
So, if I'm tracking this in my mind correctly, we needed the buses because we were having them decommissioned.
I got that. I remember that.
But this is for me, just so I'm, and we needed to purchase those buses because we needed to decommission.
Right.
And we did not have the grant in time, even though we were told it was coming.
Right.
So, we purchased the first round of buses and then soon after the purchase of the first round of buses, we then found out that we were eligible because the grant came through. So, we then said, well, if we have this $492,000, it makes sense to achieve that and purchase enough buses to be able to get the most benefit, which was the 492. So, that did happen, I believe openly in a room like this with the board. And now, we got to the point where we had it last week and we continued to wait for the bid to come in and this meeting was our next meeting. And so, it did come in after the fact where we usually have everything on the board's agenda well in advance so that you can look at it. So, the issue here is the bids were not confirmed until after the agenda that you received went out, but it is consistent with what this board had as an expectation since we first found out that the grant was available.
I understand. Anyone have other questions?
To be clear, so these 11 are not incremental. It's, this brings us up to even with the, with the buses that we've been told we must decommission. Is that correct?
These are incremental.
These are what had been originally decided in the grant. There were, if you remember, we purchased 13 and this will be 11. So, now we have gone, there were 14 that had to be decommissioned at the time. And now, this puts us to where the state highway patrol, as they did their inspections, so we would have about five more that would be an issue to follow.
Okay.
So, we're right, right about where we need to be.
And these buses are identified by VIN number. So, the, the actual VIN numbers are part of the process of the decommissioning documentation that we will have to provide in order to be able to receive the reimbursement. And the funds for the purchase of the buses have been appropriated in the capital projects fund and funded.
That's what I care about.
And this is important to us as a school district because much like the wisdom around the permanent improvement dollars that come in, we are maintaining our bus fleet by the recommendations that come to us from the Ohio School Boards Association regarding efficient and effective use and safety of buses. So, what, what we are now doing is we are reducing our carbon footprint. We are reducing the maintenance costs related to the propane buses because it is a more efficient, less maintenance-prone bus. And we now have nearly half of our fleet running at a much more efficient rate, which over time reduces greatly the cost for maintenance and potentially other costs associated with the upkeep and, and operation of the bus fleet.
Scott, I don't have an issue with any of that. I now remember the discussion. It wasn't on the agenda Friday. It got put on the agenda tonight. We didn't get an email about it and so, we're having the discussion now that we might have had by email or over the phone over the weekend. So, I, my memory is now refreshed. I'm up to speed. I'm fine. I'm sorry.
No, for anybody looking in, it's an apology that the administration needs to present to the board because you are a very informed board and you make decisions based upon review. And so, I'm comfortable that it is consistent with what the board expected. I'm disappointed that it's coming to you and you're not as knowledgeable as you typically are as the board and I will take full responsibility for that.
Well, we're fine.
They're just getting to see what our emails are like. This is what it's like. Is this it for the buses, bus purchases for the year?
This year, we've got another five coming next year.
Right, okay.
I will echo what Mr. Prebels. I apologize. It was my understanding that there was an understanding of the federal grant. The process was a little more difficult because it was a federal grant. And in the bid process, we had one bid that actually was disqualified because they did not follow the specifics of that federal grant. So, I apologize for not informing.
All good.
You mentioned legal language, so I'm assuming this has been checked by, so we're all good there? Okay.
And to answer your question, this takes the average age of a bus in the fleet from 11-plus to under 5. So, we have a very young fleet now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Broadwater. Item 12, human resources. Ms. Carnahan.
So, a little levity. You know, Mr. Broadwater showed you the air conditioning video and I just, I don't know if he even remembers this, but when he was hired, we put together a small group of, a focused group of students, parents and so forth. And I remember to the staff, I remember asking those students, you know, what is it that makes Anderson great? We, you know, we're trying to determine what our design and candidate profile is and they said, oh, we're tough. And I said, well, what do you mean by that? We don't have air conditioning in Turpin though. Oh, okay, okay. And a few questions later, the question was, if there was one thing you could change about Anderson High School, would it be, you know, the answer? Air conditioning. So, I don't think any of those students, Mr. Broadwater, got to feel that air conditioning because they know it's too long ago, but it's still, I think, kind of a funny story. So, other HR report, item 12.1. Item A, retirement. Congratulations to Sherry Burrows. She's been with the district for 28 years. I know she has been a very important part of Anderson High School for many years. She's retiring at the end of this school year and we want to wish her the best. Resignation, item B. Moving on to page two, our appointments. Item D would be change of assignments. Item E, change in salary. Item F, the first item, the appointment of Administrator Larry Corley as our supervisor of facilities and maintenance. I'm going to throw it over to Mike to tell you a little bit about Larry.
Larry, who we say, at Forest Square, we have Bob Van Wood, our maintenance supervisor, retiring toward the end of this year. And Bob has been an integral piece of what we've done for the project. So, as Bob is nearing retirement, we want to get Bob's replacement in as soon as we could. So, he's working institutional about it and will learn whatever he wants. We want to try and give that a start. But Larry Corley is coming to us from Modern Construction Company. If that sounds familiar, that is a construction company that is completely perfect and working very well. Larry is the supervisor...
are going very well, Larry is the supervisor inside the building, because he directs the , uh, work with the project, he's been with Monarch Construction for fifteen years, uh, was formerly, was his score manager of Ball Grades, and also worked at Kings Island as a supervisor there, uh, in, in the free things, and I've heard in all the references, I've heard that Larry is a high character, high work ethic, uh, and is, is, is an overall individual who's going to be extremely personable with our staff and with our students, which is extremely important, so, along with Larry Corley, to the, of course, still standing, and Larry will begin October eight, so, uh.
Welcome.
Continuing on, and item F, appointments, the first set of classified staff appointments, our support staff that are receiving probationary contracts at this time, near the bottom of the page, page three, we do see those, uh, folks who have moved on to a regular contract, um, continuing on page four with more appointments, item G, these are special services appointments, um, and you will find these appointments from pages four through seven, so you can do some more to look at those. On, um, page seven, item H would be our appointment of coaches, advisors, supplemental contracts, at the end of the time, so you know, without these codes, so many of the programs that we, um, our student director participated would not occur, um, item I, student teachers and interns, J, volunteers, again, an integral part of this district, volunteers, um, we have so many people who are willing to help out classrooms and chaperones and so forth, item K on page twelve, um, job descriptions, item L is an addendum, superintendent's contract, item M is a reappointment of superintendent contract, item N would be four memorandums of understanding, O, uh, releasing separation agreement, item P, substitute personnel, and that moves on to the next page, um, and since the, the last board meeting, our FTE remains at eight hundred six point three two, and as a reminder, the reconciliation between the seventeen eighteen and eighteen nineteen school year will take place in the October meeting, um, the superintendent recommends to board approve the personal items out of the schedule.
Thank you, Ms. Carnahan. Teaching and learning curriculum, Mr. Sears, welcome back.
Item thirteen, four hundred one, language arts books for grade nine, uh, prior to requesting approval of the following books, the book adoption of the DLA course, they are being presented to the Board of Education this evening, um, the books are listed there, these books have gone through the appropriate review process internally, uh, they are intended to provide the person reading material for students, um, these books will be available for review in the teaching learning target until the October twenty-second, two thousand eighteen Board of Education meeting, at which time formal approval of these materials will be requested.
Thank you. Student services, Ms. Ryan.
Item fourteen point one is our maximum healthcare services contract staffing agreement, uh, maximum healthcare provides first aid services for medically fragile students that are, um, are in school during our school hours, currently we provide services to students, um, this service agreement has been reviewed by council. Item fourteen point two is a motion to approve a revision for our Emily County Educational Service Non-Collaborative School Contract for our two thousand eighteen nineteen, uh, services, this revision includes readjustment of our auxiliary clubs to support our DLA and different services, their DLA different services, and it also includes use of the Part P Special Education Clubs that are allocated in the medical arts area for OT and visually impaired services. Item fourteen point three is a motion to approve, uh, an overnight trip by Anderson High School, uh, for permission for forty-six of their future business leaders of America, and, and traveling throughout the Southwest Ohio, until eighteen fifty of two thousand nineteen, and included costs and accommodations and information about travel in this item. Item fourteen point four, uh, administration of Anderson High School is requesting permission for twenty-one junior and senior DECA students, and two chaperones to travel to New York City, New York, September fifth through ninth of this year, two thousand eighteen, they will be participating in the DECA conference to reinforce concepts related to marginal finance, hospitality, and fashion merchandising, uh, there is a nine hundred dollar cost per student, uh, which includes, uh, the registration, hotel lodging, airfare, and entertainment, and this is, uh, the arranged DECA New York experience. Item fourteen point five, uh, this is a, um, Anderson High School trip, um, again, they're requesting permission for fourteen of their varsity boys and girls cross-country team, um, and two chaperones to travel to Louisville, Kentucky, to participate in the greater Louisville cross-country team, and the cost for these students, uh, to participate, which is not included in the item, would be approximately sixty dollars, um, and that is for the cost of their hotel rooms and meals, they will travel by bus and returning with parents, uh, again, on the return trip. Item fourteen point six, uh, the administrations of Anderson Intermodal High School, I want to think of two athletic directors that put together these sixteen trips that are anticipated for two thousand eighteen nineteen, um, for the, uh, for those students who are, uh, may qualify for the event, I, uh, reviewed the dates, the destinations, the chaperones, um, costs, which are primarily supported by our athletic boosters, uh, their accommodations and travel arrangements, again, all been reviewed. The superintendent recommends to board approve items fourteen point one and fourteen point six, as proposed.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Questions, no, um, treasurer's report, item fifteen point one, Mr. Jifrey.
Hey, Ms. Fruman, uh, item A, item A, donations of a hundred sixty-seven dollars and four cents, item B, statement of board accounts, which, which matches the reconciliation in item F, items C, D, and E are estimated revenues and expenditures, uh, revenues, uh, by line item and expenditures by function and object, and these are as of August, so these will change because of also bringing forward permanent improvements, or permanent appropriations tonight, item G is the investment portfolio for the construction fund and general fund, uh, item H is the permanent appropriations, which, uh, for the general fund also ties to the five-year forecast, which will be coming to the board next month. Item I, the transfers of funds, five hundred thousand dollars from the general fund permanent improvement funds for projects that are slated for spring, uh, to begin in the spring and be completed through the summer, and, uh, general fund transfer of eight hundred thousand dollars to the building fund to address any, uh, change orders or any other issues with regards to the building projects, and with that, I'd like to make a recommendation to the board to approve, like in set agenda items eleven point one through fifteen point one.
Thank you, Mr. Jifrey, uh, motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items eleven point one to fifteen point one.
Second?
Mr. Jifrey?
Ms. Joyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Dr. Heith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes. Uh, item sixteen point one, business advisory council and cultural proficiency report.
Business advisory council met, uh, we discussed the five-year forecast that suggests a levy is necessary to ensure financial solvency for additional three years, um, to meet the board's policy of eight million dollars in the cash balance, uh, that would be exhausted below the eight million dollar figure in the two thousand nineteen twenties, so that triggers a discussion about the possibility of increased resources in the school district for operations, uh, the second thing that they discussed was the private investment information, a little bit of what we talked tonight about, uh, transportation and purchase of property, uh, the recommendations from the BAC a few months ago were to move forward with those, um, private investment, uh, arrangements, and we were happy to inform, uh, the committee that the three percent interest rate that they believe that they, that, that we used as a marker, both of the purchases came under the three percent level, so they were happy to hear that, and then we talked about the state requirements for the business advisory council by new legislation, which, um, talks about partnership development, college and career pathways and curriculum that, uh, they review, uh, which happens through the work of the foundation and, uh, Donna Laber in her work as the new partnership, uh, expert in the district, and so they review that and, uh, make, uh, recommendations regarding the pathways and courses that we can offer, and then they, uh, set their schedule for the meetings upcoming, uh, for the upcoming year, and the next meeting will be in November. I'll slow down a bit on the second part of, um, my report, because there has been, uh, a bit of discussion in our school district regarding care, so we have a strategic vision, that vision has three big areas that we focus on, to ensure the success for all students and to empower each student to achieve personal success, and those three things are pathways and innovation, partnerships and operations, and culture and climate, which is, uh, on the, the board's strategic vision to promote, and the culture and climate is to promote continuous improvement, collaboration, and well-being for all students and staff across our school district. So, regarding culture and climate, the district's two thousand eighteen nineteen map that you saw that Mr. Broadwater had up on the screen, or, excuse me, Mr. Sears had up, looks like this, for everyone who, uh, is aware, and in the area of culture and climate, it does not only talk about care or, um, issues of race, uh, ethnicity, religion, there are many things that the school district does regarding culture and climate, we, uh, have listed on that document as things we're working on, collaborative leadership and decision-making that, uh, was discussed earlier this evening, MTSS, which is our multi-fib systems of support for students that we have in classrooms, we have school-based mental health expansion as part of that strategic vision, and there's a bunch of work that's happening in that area under the direction of, uh, Betsy Ryan, also, uh, John Eckert is working with Mike Broadwater on a lot of the safety and security issues, and we have the district leadership academy, which Greg talked about a little bit this evening with our PLCs, and the discussions we have about environments and cultures for students in our classroom, and then we have as an item of importance this year, cultural proficiency expansion, and that's where care fits underneath of that, and care stands for competency, advocacy, relationships, and engagement, and so in two thousand seventeen and eighteen year, the care advisory met seven times last year, as our sort of, uh, beginning of the process started, and they were, uh, meeting to orient to the work that they were going to, um, undertake this particular school year, they wanted to gain a shared understanding, and they wanted to try to recommend next steps, and so the advisory consisted of a small group of individuals passionate about this work, with the recognition that the group must expand, which it has this year, to be more inclusive as it gains a better sense of the work that it needs to accomplish. The committee focused last year on six key areas identified from the rubric, which is designed by the National Center for Culturally Responsive Educational Systems, and so this is research-based work that is, um, at the national level, which is also, um, um, guiding the work that we are accomplishing in the school district, and so those six areas that we are fundamentally taking a look at in our school district through care are the ability that the district identify, or the, the focus that the district identifies and utilizes multiple approaches to supporting student engagement and academic success, um, multiple approaches, MTSS and the other things that we've talked about, health and wellness, social, emotional, the district engages in in-depth efforts to help teachers and administrators understand the ways in which race, ethnicity, culture, social class, ability, and language influence learning and achievement for all students, so having a clear understanding of the students that you serve within your classroom, does the district ensure that school policies and rules consider cultural and linguistic characteristics, characteristics of its students, describe, so are we aware of the cultural and linguistic characteristics and the challenges of students who represent, who are representative of those issues, uh, is that making its way in our classroom, do we identify and access community resources to address the needs of culturally and linguistically diverse students, uh, by our partnerships and things that we do by including additional folks in the care, uh, program, the district ensure that educational and behavioral interventions are planned and implemented in a culturally appropriate manner, that happens through our IEP processes, that happens through our team build, our PLCs, ensuring that we are culturally aware of those things, and is the district ensuring that methods and strategies used by staff to help students from diverse racial, ethnic, and cultural backgrounds meet state standards and mandated requirements? So, these are six areas that we are taking a look at this year through care, under the direction and guidance of the national, not their guidance, not under the direction, but certainly under the guidance of their literature from the National Center for Culturally Responsive Educational Systems. So, this school district is not having a knee-jerk reaction to any particular set of data or any particular issue that is in our school district, we are fundamentally taking a comprehensive look across the board at all of our services, all of our programs, and all of the students in which we serve, to ensure that when we take this on, when we put our foot in the water, our toe in the water, so to speak, that we are doing it in a way that is fundamentally meeting the expectations of national organizations, research-based, uh, efforts in this area, so that Forest Hills is among the best when you think about culture and climate for its students. So, in April, the work of the advisory was shared with our district leadership team in order to solicit feedback and administrator input regarding needs and next steps, there were recommendations that came from our district leadership team that we are implementing this year, and that was to gather additional information regarding the current status, including student perception of how we're doing in our schools, which includes Gallup surveys and other types of surveys that we will implement this year, to get a better understanding of how students feel about their culture, how students feel about their environment, those hope and engagement type things that are essential for environment for all subgroups of students that we serve, to be able to feel comfortable, confident, and capable in their classrooms, and as Greg talked about tonight, to ensure that gap closing is an explicit part of each of our building CIP programs or CIP plans, so explicitly having, uh, goals within our building continuous improvement plans that meet the needs of all student learners to close the gap across the board, because we know that if students are doing better in classes regardless of their social, economical, or race, or ethnicity, that they do better, and so we want to make sure, uh, that we are covering that, and they wanted to create care leaders in each building who will meet regularly during the year and focus on learning and growing their knowledge of diversity and how to foster a school environment that supports all of our students, so this year, each of our buildings has a representative, or representatives actually, coming from the buildings who are coming and they're meeting in the group called CARE, one of the people who is participating in that is, uh, Mrs. Choice, as a member of the Board of Education, she has, um, asked to be part of that, and, and that has been a great opportunity for the board to be engaged in the process, so each building has recommended three to five building staff, including one administrator for participation, care leaders attended a three-hour introductory, introductory session this summer at High Ames on August first to start to get acclimated to what the work would look like this year, and we have put dates together where Wendy Strickler and Catrice Quater, I didn't say that right tonight, Greg, Catay, excuse me, uh, from HC ESC, uh, organized a Train the Trainer program, and in that, we have distributed books across the school district, so everybody who is part of CARE has received one of these books, the book is Culturally Responsive Teaching and the Brain, so it is not only about a culture and being culturally responsive, it is a, a, a discussion about how students learn, how the brain functions when a person feels though they are not the dominant, um, person in the room, or their culture is not represented in the room, and how that impacts their learning, and so this book is about instructional practices and culture, and blending those two, not just culture, not just instruction, but having a sense of who is in our classrooms, what cultures they represent, and how our teaching can impact that in very positive and also very negative ways, so that first meeting was. So that first meeting was about 45 people who came together, and they began to work through learning about their personal biases, learning about those things that motivate them regarding culture, ethnicity, and other types of things, learning about themselves and how they impact the culture in their classroom, in their work environment, and even with their relationships in their home as well as school. So we're focused on helping teachers understand the brain-based principles that govern culturally responsive teaching so that we can stimulate underperforming students, that's the purpose of the book, to be able to stimulate underperforming students, their cognitive development, and we want to grow them as self-directed learners, which is the key to success in life, being self-directed and having the confidence in who you are, what you're about, and the choices that you're making are directed towards your personal passions and your personal attributes. So this book is written for teachers, it's written for instructional coaches, and it's written for administrators. And its goal is to increase the awareness of who is in our, increase those folks' awareness of who is in our classes and buildings and their cultural lens of interpreting and evaluating students' individual and collective behavior. By spring of 2020, these leaders will work on action plans with their building administrators to incorporate into their 2021 continuous improvement plans as a subset of this PBIS work. So that was a long description that CARE is not the place where we talk about the red-skin mascot. It's not the place where we talk about an item that comes up that is upsetting to someone in a building. It is the place where those things are brought to the table to be discussed. But CARE is about a school district, a larger defined program to develop cultures and environments within our school where all individuals feel comfortable, confident, and are able to be self-directed in their passions and in their abilities. And so yes, we'll talk about redskins, yes, we'll talk about other issues, but this is about a district moving forward with cultural awareness and responding to those things, but not necessarily reacting to those things in the moment. We're trying to build capacity among our staff to do just what Greg talked about, to rise all ships, to rise all kids in our school district. And so that's what this committee is doing this year, learning about those things and learning how we can take the best advantages possible through this work to implement things in our school district that makes sense for all students and empowering all students and teachers.
Thank you.
I think you said it all. But yeah, as well.
Thank you. All right. Item 16.2, Policy Committee Report, Randy?
Now, the Policy Committee has not met since our last Board of Education meeting. However, we do have a meeting scheduled for October 16th when we will review the quarterly batch of new policies as a result of changes from Ohio Department of Education, let's see, the State Board of Education, the legislature, and the federal government. So we do go through all those and to try and make sure that Forest Hills is compliant with all these various regulations that come down the pike. I want to comment, call out Mrs. Monk, and thank her for coordinating what is a very complex set of policy issues.
Thank you. Item 16.3, the Human Resource Committee. We did have a meeting, we met last Wednesday, spent a lot of time and went through in considerable detail where we are, where we expect to be, but as Ms. Carnahan earlier reported, we do a reconciliation in October. Things like the bus routes and few of the class sizes and things like that are still in a bit of state of flux, so it would be more productive to wait for the reconciliation the next month. But there is a clear plan in what's going on. Item 16.4, Finance Committee.
Okay, the Finance Committee has met since our last meeting. Met September 13th. We primarily looked at the five-year forecast, looked at revenue projections over that five-year period, and once again, as we've been saying all along, confirmed that the need for a operating levy sometime in May or possibly November of next year to be able to fund us for the next three years.
Thank you. Item 16.5, Teaching and Learning Committee. Forrest?
We are working on that. Looks like we will have a meeting in November. I'm still working on that.
All right. Safety Committee Report, Ms. Barber?
Nothing new to report.
All right. 16.7, Forest Hills Foundation Report, Ms. Stone.
Are you ready? Okay, Forest Hills Foundation met on September 12th. We met at, actually, Wilson Elementary, so the board got to take a tour, and they were very impressed. It was great. And we are programs, oh, okay, thank you. We had a Destination Imagination Information Meeting on last Monday night, and we had a lot of parents show up, so hopefully we'll get a lot of teams this year. Last year, we had 32 teams, and we hope to be able to have at least that many again this year. So if parents are interested, they can reach out to me at info@fhfe.org, and I can get them hooked up with their building advisor. We're having our PSAT practice test on Sunday, October 7th. We saw the commended in the National Merit Scholars, so the PSAT practice test. I have to say, since we've been doing this, this is probably our eighth, seventh or eighth year of doing the practice test, the scores have gone up considerably in our district, so we're very proud of that. And the teacher grants, last week, the prize patrol, Mr. Sears was with us, went out and awarded the teacher grants. It was very fun. We got to surprise teachers in their classrooms and give them money, which is always the fun part. Our event, we have our soiree coming up this Saturday night. People can still attend if they want. You can pay at the door if you so desire. It's at the Anderson Center. Our All-In Community Food Drive will be October 8th through 12th. That's when the whole community, all the Forest Hills schools get canned goods and personal care items for inter-purish ministry. That's the week before the Turpin-Anderson game, and then we collect them at the game also. And finally, we are now accepting nominations for next year's distinguished alumni, doing in 2019. We did not do it in the fall like we did last year, we moved it to the spring. So it will be the distinguished alumni luncheon this year will be on, or next year will be on Friday, March 15th, and we're accepting nominations now. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. 16.8, Legislative Liaison Report, Randy?
The State House and Senate are in recess until after the election, so not much is happening there. Of course, that means also nothing bad could happen there. Let's see, the, I wish I, the next subject was on academics, but this happens to be on safety and security. The School Safety and Security Solutions Summit took place in the Convention Center in Columbus, Ohio, September 12th. Twenty-two statewide organizations came together to put on this conference, and I got to make a comment. These organizations, normally their political thinking is very different, and they have a tough time being in the same room together, but this issue is so sensitive and so important that these groups came together and put on the conference. I think we had three or four people from Forest Hills attended this conference. Over 1,000 people attended statewide, and hopefully it will make an impact. And I mentioned to another group, it's hard to measure success when your goal is for something to not happen, but I firmly believe that that conference and conferences like that will save lives in the state of Ohio over the long run. Actually, I think we talked about Senate Bill 216. You probably reported on this last month, it was passed, and it was the mandate relief bill, at least that's the way it started out, but there are a lot of good things coming out of that. I did want to comment that I've been a member of the State Report Card Committee since we were talking about the report card earlier. I was appointed by the State Superintendent, and the one thing I will say is, everybody on that committee agrees that it is an imperfect tool. There are a lot of different opinions on how to fix it. We did make recommendations to the State Superintendent and the Board of Education. One of them is to move away from using letter grades altogether because it's misleading to parents that are used to a letter grade scale to evaluate student progress. The scale presents, what we're measuring is very different conceptually than what parents are used to, and so the whole concept of a letter grade, A through F, is just misguided. But again, it's something that is very complex because the feds are involved, the state legislature's involved, the State Board of Education's involved, the State Superintendent, Ohio Department of Education is involved, they've all got a little piece of this. And so to think that you can wave the magic wand and fix this is, it's just not that simple. The committee was off basically for the summer, but we do fire up again here in the fall. Last thing I want to mention is that this is federal. Congress continues to make progress on fiscal year 2019 education funding. My understanding is that there are actually, believe it or not, increases in IDEA and Title I, which will have an impact on our school district, not significant impact, but it'll be positive. The Senate recently voted in favor of the fiscal year 2019 appropriations bill for the U.S. Departments of Education, Labor, Health and Human Services, and Defense. House is expected to vote on this measure this week. Interestingly enough, if President Trump does sign this bill, it would be the first time since the 1990s that this bill was actually, that the appropriation bill was completed prior to the beginning of the fiscal year. So that might be something positive coming out of Washington, DC. Anyway, that's the extent of my report unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you. 16.9, the Forest Hills Teacher Association Report. Maybe one night we'll start with you, Donna.
Well, first of all, good evening and happy birthday. I understand it's your 49th birthday. And that jacket's more stunning. On behalf of the association, and I just want to make sure, I always emphasize this from our teachers, that we're the largest percentage membership in southwest Ohio, which gives me that great pleasure of getting to go to Columbus every month to talk about great things that we do in Forest Hills, which is also very easy to do, and it's a great thing. Tonight, though, as I was sitting here, I was thinking about a couple of different things, and I always have something written and ready to prepare to speak on, but I also sometimes reflect as people working. And I really just want to take a minute to the board, and I really want to point a couple of things out. Mr. Prebles, Mr. Broadwater, Ms. Carnahan, Mr. Sears, Mr. Meese, and Mrs. Ryan, who I've known for a very long, dear time as she sits here, I want to tell you, these people are awesome. They work really hard. And that group that's back there on the back row tonight, in the very back, those principals who got school started, all kids got home, I believe, and started school, and we all got there together, and I'm going to welcome Arastora and Anita Eschman as one of our building principals as well. Thank you so much from the teachers and all the hard work that everybody does on their behalf from the board, just to let you know, they work very, very hard, and it's very appreciated. I have two quick items tonight. One is, I've always mentioned, I know I did on opening day, but it's something that we are working with and it's something we'll continue to work with, is our building advisory committees and as well as a little bit on our State Report Card as well. The first one on our building advisory is, again, we are only about six months into this, and the goal is to create really strong building leaderships within our district with our teachers and our administrators and to help them solve things. And we, you know, we're welcoming two new principals in with that area, but also just feeling like we can move in the right directions to help them solve and be working together within the buildings for the best of their building and for their students. The second one is, I thought that Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Sears, did an outstanding job explaining something that can be extremely difficult to parents, the community, as they look at report cards and try to make those decisions and try to understand the outcomes. And that vision alignment and execution of what we do here in Forest Hills takes a lot of work. It takes a lot of time and energy. We're successful in a lot of things, a lot of things we can always improve on. I did have one moment with that as I was watching, and I've listened, and I look at a lot of different school districts, and as we spoke about this last Thursday in Columbus, you know, there's a real passion in public education that's really about whole child. And one of the moments, I remember when Mr. Prebles first came to Forest Hills, we spent time, I think Scott, if you recall, we went out and we went to every building and we did a survey. And I remember one of the first things that we surveyed with every one of our buildings that came out very clearly, the number-one things that our teachers said about our kids on our ranking, it really wasn't academic. It was about social, emotional, vulnerability of children, and always putting our kids first and making sure that we think about them every day and what they do. And that may not be always graded on the report card, but it shows that passion. If you have that, then the rest of it will come together. And that, we were really able to see that. I think it was one of those moments for Scott and for I, and for those of us that were there that they could really look at it and go, these people care about what they do. And if we care, then we can make change. Do you have any questions? If not, I just wanted to leave you with that this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barber. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is October 22nd, 2018, at 7:00 PM. That will be at Nagel Middle School. We don't have an executive session tonight. There is a little time left for Forrest to celebrate his birthday. We have a motion to adjourn. Mr. Jufrey?
Yes.
Ms. Joyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Good night.